Of everything, he's given us suggestions for it to take place. And my times, as he gets to come from people that are experienced or stuff like that. Okay, one thing that I noticed that he gives suggestions on general service and stuff like that, and then we turn around and we made it fail. The reason we made it fail is the people that took in charge of it. They have to stop. They have to be a little stricter. You know, working for a city or working for any company. You have to adjust on things like that, you know. Where I used to work, they used to give us the sockings. They used to bring people in, or make for them, as in Chicago, and then just sit there. Sit right here, give it in there, and they would give it to us. And if it was our responsibility as managers and stuff like that, they would go out and sit and then put the right people to take care of it. We never failed on that because we followed our suggestions. They're the actuals. You know, those other gentlemen that time studies and everything, he used to give it to us. Okay? And that's something that we need to follow up with this young gentleman right here and see what else can do for us so we can save money for the city.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else who should speak? Okay, so you know, further into sign off, we're trying to public communication. All right, let me have a various presentation. First one we have is the presentation by the workshop group. So, just start. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. My time is done. To the re-ones. Uh, thank you again for providing me the opportunity. Uh, I think it's really twofold. Uh, and again, a big evening to Mayor of the Council, Shannon, Robert, and folks I've worked so well with, the union behind us in the audience. Um, I'd just like to take, because I really want this mayor to be a dialogue. I think, uh, I, and I appreciate that Shannon said, I always find it's, it's, it's far easier to look at the landscape and come up with ideas or suggestions to improve services and operations. It's easy for us. We all have ideas and say, if we did this, we can do that. And it's very important to identify whether it's a revenue opportunity, cost-saving opportunity. I think that fundamentally, the most difficult is when it comes to implementing recommendations. Because often times you confront situations which you didn't anticipate. Uh, you get pushback from various segments in the community, whether it's residents, whether it's some members of an organization. Uh, and really, as a, you know, person who sort of parachutes in, as any consultant does, not a member of the full-time staff, uh, we have to rely on members of an organization's full-time staff to work with us to implement. Because at the end of the day, it's the implementation that determines whether an initiative is successful or not. I, I just want to take, you know, a couple of seconds to acknowledge that, you know, Shannon, uh, and of course Danny, uh, you know, and the other folks I've worked with. Because they, they, what's important for me, and I think what's important for you, is for an organization to be open-minded, to say, hmm, that's, you know, together, that sounds like a good idea, let's go ahead and, and do that. Um, because, you know, often times in organizations, and I think what I like very much about your city is the idea that just because we've been doing something a particular way and it seems to be reasonable, doesn't mean that we can improve and enhance results. And I think, um, you know, just, just to put a, you know, exclamation point on this, there's a book that many of us have read, it's called An Organization That's Gone Too Poor. And the problem was so few organizations are great, is that they're merely, not merely, but satisfied with being good and the status quo. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that the results that we've thus far achieved, and you're all aware of them, um, the implementation, I think, has gone pretty darn well. There's some that, um, you know, a couple that didn't go as well, but you know what? Um, there, there's a, not to, not to sound high for Luton, but there was a great French philosopher, political philosopher named Voltaire, Ronald Voltaire, and he said, really interestingly, "Great is the enemy of the good." And so merely by looking for perfection, oftentimes you never take the steps to come up with very good results. So with that said, I just want to quickly go through the areas initiatives that have been implemented, that money's being saved for the city, and I think the results are very good. Um, there, there's three big basic ones right now. Uh, and again, your staff has been terrific in, in working to, of course, joining to implement these things. And really, they took a wide share in this information. Here's the landscape. I think it was very important. And, and that initiative's going to save between seventy-five thousand and ninety-five thousand dollars annually, again, to regain that. Not only the savings, but, you know, the, the results have been good results, and I think there's a, I call it collateral, secondary benefit, and, and, you know, the, the employment of a few residents on a part-time basis. It's always very nice. I think, you know, when we talked about, when I think one of my first appearances here, of course, felt there's always a tendency to outsource things. And certain functions perhaps are better outsourced, but there are many things that an organization has an infrastructure that, uh, when they are well-directed and well-managed, uh, you can achieve a result from taking on additional responsibilities. And I think that's one of them. Restructuring of, of the transit, I, I think that, um, what I really like best, that goes to be under the idea of, it was working well, but are things... That's not me, I shut my mouth. You're not?
Yeah, I think you're used to it.
Oh, okay. Just... So on the left, a little table, I'll do the rest. I'll just throw it back. Gosh darn it. They really want you. Mom was on point. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm very pleased with that, because there was an example where we improved and enhanced, and then, so then the final areas are renegotiating, uh, you know, Danny, you took a look at Honeywell contract. I'm a big believer, um, especially in public entities, I'm a big believer if a city or a school district or a college, like, is, is, is suffering, you know, through the tough economy, that our vendors should feel somewhat pain in that sense. In terms, and Honeywell would achieve a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm here to talk about renewal. Uh, I've spoken with some, uh, some staff folks and some of the council members, and I think some of the additional projects that, um, have, are, if they haven't been teed up, it can be teed up. I think there's a, uh, potential opportunity, we've talked about it, it works. Um, I think the, um, why every organization or every city doesn't do it works, because they're not easy to do. There's a whole long, lengthy approval process, and also, uh, you confront every so often the challenges of, um, of the domain, is it... Once they're up, it's a very nice revenue stream, and I think that's something that is important. I think there, uh, there's part-time tension issue of the, of the make, uh, the waste, uh, removal recycling, which is a big contract, perhaps a time that, that should be renewed or reviewed, not only to see, uh, if there are better opportunities to save money or enhance revenues from a point of view of the city, but what I believe is very important, you have a very big contract that's been in the domain in your city for a while, to make sure the benefits that you think were enduring, uh, to the benefit of your city are in fact, as terms and conditions, that the vendor is meeting his responsibilities, his contractual responsibilities. Uh, I just want to touch, uh, on two others very quickly. One is, uh, there's an area that is the city collecting all the money it should. For example, uh, what I've advised of, you know, someone, uh, snacks into a city property or snacks into a city car, uh, there's a judgment against that person for the damage. Has the city been able to collect those funds? Things like that. Uh, I know in the situation of our, our, our jail, uh, when people stay overnight from another city, I'd say from the jail, but overnight, it's the department, that's how it seems, that we're collecting on those. And finally, I just want to bring up one issue, which I think could be a very, very significant opportunity. Of course, you might have opportunities, you know, that you know your city better than I. Uh, I, I know there's an issue of the Red Flex cameras, uh, that, you know, in fact, it's being terminated, I think May fifteen, they're out. But what's very important, and I, I don't think this issue should be left unresolved, um, as you know, the way that the contract read is that you would never be more out of pocket than has been collected by Red Flex camera, okay? Uh, in the past three years, the city has paid approximately a million dollars to it. And one of the things with, um, with Captain Reynoso and I, and with the chief, what we looked at is how can you determine the monies that came in to the city solely as a result of the Red Flex fines? And at least what we determined, when you get a monthly check, uh, from, from the LA County Courts, it'll say, let's say it says fifty thousand dollars, thirty thousand, sixty thousand, they are unable, you know, unable or willing to say to you, uh, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred came from Red Flex camera violations, you know, twenty thousand came from parking or speeding or whatever it is. Now, I'm sure some money has been collected, but if in fact you have not, uh, received, you know, one million and one dollars, let's say, over those three years, Red Flex owes you, and what they really should have been doing every month was to provide a statement, and I don't believe they ever provided a statement of how much money came in, you know, on a monthly basis based on those violations and what was, you know, what was collected. So regardless, uh, you know, Robert, uh, if, if they are gone, I think it's very important to take a look at that, uh, and to, you know, for them to show, prove to us that they have paid us when we paid them. Just significant amount, and, you know, that's, that's, that's my conclusion. Do we, do we have any questions?
Just, just looking forward to, to moving forward, I, I know that there's still a few things that we need to look at. Um, like you said, the most important is probably collecting all the revenue that we should from especially like the, I call it the restitution of the jail.
Right.
Um, also, like you said, from what I understand, there have been some accidents where they knocked down one of our, I believe, one of our light poles or something, and I don't believe that's ever been found on place. So I think those are some of the things that we need to put into motion. I know that there has been on the agenda or on the table, hiring someone to do that, where it is exactly, it, it, on the table as far as getting someone, but we never pay them to that very soon.
And, and I think it's, you know, just say, um, it's been great working with you. I, I hope, I hope to work again, and as you know, um, you know, compensation, some customers, I just, I, I, that's what I believe, and, you know, city center will be financially struggling, you know, we all have to make our, you know, contributions.
Can you please like clarify what are the areas that, and I know you kind of explained it as we were having the dialogue, but explain all the areas that you focused on already that have been implemented and the savings that can come to areas.
Well, I mean, the, the transit savings, I think, is, is the most significant. Um, it's just, it's not only the savings, I mean, it'd be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in savings to the city. Um, and I think what the win-win is going to be, plus there was a small fare increase, the win-wins to the city will be utilizing that money to, to upgrade the buses. Um, one of the things we can talk about Danny and I with your provider is, and I think this would be terrific, I think, that, you know, standing at a bus stop and your radio signal, you know, the teal pumpkin line coming to Metro, you know, uh, there's a digital readout that would say, bus is three minutes away. And that, that's, you know, and that's, those things are important. Perhaps also, and that's, this is again a policy issue that you, the council, can make, is it important to have a camera on the bus? So that it would not only show what's going on in the bus, but also when that bus door opens. And then, as you can see, that recent tragedy in Amtrak, you know, outside of Philadelphia, there's some significant discussion out putting a camera, and also for some potential liability issues and things like that. Then we had the Honeywell, which is, uh, Honeywell Corporation maintains, while you're keeping a ventilation, we were able to renegotiate a contract that really locked in, and added some additional features for the next couple of years, saving a hundred thousand dollars to save. Good quality vendor. And then again, the landscaping, and I call it really, it's a little more fancy, maybe because of cutting grass. And, and, you know, in a funny sort of way, it sounds like honey, which helps us, is the track, cutting grass as well, is the same. Those couple of chiefs, thank you.
What was the savings with the, um, the landscaping?
That, 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 well, the landscaping service, it probably, uh, low to high, seventy-five, ninety-five thousand a year.
Honeywell was a hundred K?
Hundred K, uh, of, of, of savings over the course of that new contract. And, uh, you know, two, two fifty, it's, it's, it's almost two hundred thousand with restructuring, and then there's a fare increase, approximately fifty thousand dollars, which gives you the twenty fifty thousand combination of new revenue fare increase and also from the restructuring of those buses.
Was that the two fifty one year?
No, that's, that's every year. Every year, yeah. Everything is annually, the Honeywell is a hundred thousand dollars a year, I believe. I, I think, I think the contract was like a hundred and ten thousand a year or something?
Yeah.
It's a five-year savings, five-year savings, not a hundred thousand a year. The whole contract, I think it's about a hundred and twenty thousand a year, so you're going to save plus the, uh, twenty percent a year for some of these, you know, for that.
Well, I thought I mentioned too regarding the collections, how we fight for the property. I, I just saw something came through, where I believe Shama just collected about ten grand for operating damage, playing like what they're talking about, where we had not really pursued that. And I think that, you know, um, either Shama or our staff were doing that, I think they had ten K back.
Yeah, there was one other issue, it just comes to mind, that I quote, I think, for revenue generating, do you remember I mentioned this, I think, that, you know, Danny and I walked around, I mean, this is not a big opportunity, but I think it's also a service opportunity. The, uh, the company that was doing the vending, you know, a bunch of the patients, I think there's, there's twofold opportunity. One point that always bothers me, when I pass vending machines and they're pretty much empty. Uh, a couple of times I did, you remember Dan, they were empty, and then, so it's a service idea, a feature, and also not to make some money. I mean, especially, you know, hot summer nights, some of your, um, your, you know, outdoor recreation facilities, like senior center, a swimming pool, uh, I mean, there's a lot of bottles of water, you know, being consumed in a swimming center, and she may be finishing it off. So it's a probably possible. So, I think, Chris, so what's the total savings that has been saved? Do you have that number?
Total savings for the landscape contract?
On the first contract that we did, that we did with the...
Yeah, the, the main career, the, the landscape contract, Honeywell Solutions, and Southland Transit. Uh, the landscape is eighty thousand for the first two years, and then a hundred thousand thereafter, so approximately three sixty. The Honeywell is, because the state is about eighty to a hundred thousand over the five-year length of the contract. Um, the Southland Transit is approximately a hundred thousand for the first two years, and then two hundred and forty-two thousand per year thereafter.
Yeah, so then how much is the total, then, for the savings?
Uh, so about eighty thousand, I'm going to have to get my account to live out. Uh, three sixty, a one, and we got, uh, seven fifty, and two hundred, uh, it's, it's in the one point two million range over five years.
How much did we pay him for the first contract?
His?
Thirty-eight dollars. He was a very good person.
Twenty percent.
I, I took it in Netflix, yeah.
Yeah, his compensation is twenty percent, only of the actual savings and only for two years.
And which is how, the total, the balance?
Uh, that was approximately fifty, about sixty thousand dollars.
So one point two million is a saving, and you got paid sixty thousand, is that what you're saying?
Approximately. I got the add in.
But it continues though, right? Savings.
Our savings continue forever. He only gets paid for the first two years. And he's actually lowered his rate this, for this renewal, it's proposed to be lowered to fifteen percent as a whole.
And there's a third rule, and there are exceptions.
Who's going to be sending us? One.
Okay, so, oh, sorry. Well, just looking at it, so, I mean, it's safe to say you, it's one point two million, sixty thousand per two years, let's just say it's safe to say, since we've had him here, it's been a million dollars savings to our pocket. Or added revenue.
I added it up, it's one point four million over five years.
So it's about four hundred thousand a year. For sixty thousand dollars?
No, it's cheap. Well, somebody's, that was higher, okay. It's fine.
You thought you was higher with payments to him or what?
Uh, no, the payment.
Don't encourage him here.
What, a three bar?
No, no, no. It's fine. All right, so, anyone else have any questions?
No, thank you.
Right.
That's another question for you. On the travel cost, are you willing to forego the travel cost in the, it's kind of funny awkward that we're paying for the travel cost.
Well, I, 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 I saw you awkward because you're awkward. Um, in, in negotiations and discussions, um, I capped it, I said two times. I capped it, uh, at twenty-five hundred dollars per year. And I also said that it might travel, and what I've certainly done, which is the honest and right thing to do, if I had another client, you pay fifty percent, even, you know, two clients, I don't need money on travel. I look at the travel, to my hotel, airfare, a rental car, and park my car, for things. I, I never billed you for a meal or anything, but to your point, uh, I also said to Shannon that if I don't have anyone else to come out with, and my travels, let's say, hurt twelve hundred dollars, I will only bill at fifty percent of the twelve hundred dollars. And, uh, councilman, the, what I said, if during the course of that, let's say, twenty-five hundred dollars, that you reimburse me for my travel for a year, this year, if I don't save any money, I'll give you twenty-five hundred dollars. So, um, I don't know if that answers your question. And that's probably a deal I'd never, um, extended.
And I also think that if we called you in, like, say, for instance, today, that you've already given presentations to us, and also to our staff, that you were called in today, I think that it's our obligation to pay the half of whatever you, you request, because we asked you to come out.
Well, I, I will even say this, just so, so we can, you know, get it on the table. I, I say, because I, I get my word, and then Shannon knows, I get my word about this, I said, uh, I'll come out, I make this pitch, and I'm not paying, I'm not feeling different towards you. All right, guys? It's good memory? I'll be there. But yeah, I think we've got to be cautious, because if we got other vendors, we're going to pay them the same, I mean, we're going to pay them the same. Say, say you get future vendors, but not like anyone else. I mean, I personally, I personally don't believe that we should be paying anyone to come out here. I mean, we're, I mean, I understand, but this is, this is, I've never heard that, I've never, the council never, ever paid anyone to come out here for this, regardless.
It's not a personal trip. He's coming out of your own business.
But this is business, they shouldn't pay anyone, airfare. That's unheard of.
Mayor, well, I'll just add...
And, and I know it's a little thing, but it's a big thing definitely, because I've never, that's never been done here. But, but you're willing for, you just stated that you were willing to for that, or something?
Fifty percent.
No, what I said was for tonight. Since I was, I made a presentation that, you know, to the new contract, I said, I'm not building a nickel for my presentation. So I said, I said, firstly, I said, secondly, that I will only, eh, eh, for the coming year of the new contract, a maximum, I will bill, it'll be twenty-five hundred dollars, of which I only bill fifty percent of my actual travel fees, and if I don't save any money, I give you the twenty-five hundred you know, you know, reimbursing for. And I think, I mean, I, 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 I understand, you know, it's, it's something, now it's argumentative, but I, I would say, you know, looking back, you know, you know, a million four hundred thousand dollars at my payment, and you're, and I haven't, it was actually a couple thousand dollars of travel fees, I, I certainly don't think, you know, the city got paid to learn me for what I did.
Well, you know, I think my, you know, my, my, let me just say this real quick. I mean, I respect your business person, obviously, you're, you're, you're paid. Our, we hire executive-level people, and I expect that the chief executive officer look into this yourself, as opposed to going out and, and, and use NASA's say, because I've seen this, we had six million dollars saved, and the fact that, that we have professional level individuals, they should have come out and told us, this is the savings that's available. We shouldn't have to go outside and have someone tell us what to do.
I excuse you.
I know, but hold on, I'm not, but what I'm saying here, sorry about that, but you know, what I'm just saying here, that's your responsibility as a CEO, and I expect that to go from this point on, because to me, this is unacceptable, that we're having to have someone go outside, show us how to save, and then we turn around and have to pay that person for showing us. And that's your responsibility as CEO, I want you to know that.
But I, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
These contracts go back to two thousand and two or two thousand and four, so I'm not trying to be on anybody's side at this point, but I look at it from an employer's perspective, like I always do, and it's the council, it's us, the bosses' responsibility to have been looking or asking about those contracts, regardless of who's sitting at the CEOs. I think that the CEO and a lot of our staff have been very thin with a very, very low gap, and I think that if we can bring someone in, I don't care what business you're running, if we can bring someone in to tell you how you can, that's why they have business advisors and financial advisors, because you, you're busy making money, and you want someone to be able to tell you how you can save money or how you can make more money. And those people can pay from a percentage. I do it all the time with my schools. So, so I say, why should I be going out there and having to negotiate, and lots of times, if you're the boss, it's a lot easier to bring in a third party to argue those, or to negotiate those contracts for you, rather than you yourself, because sometimes you have a personal or friendly relationship with these people, or you had a relationship for many years with them, and it's easier to bring in a third party to argue and say, hey, come on, we've had this contract since two thousand and two, and it's never been looked at, you know, there's, these are different times, do we really need all these screens? Or could we add this, or could we do that, or whatever? So in, in, in looking at it, like I said, from a boss and an employer, I really do believe that it's our responsibility to look at these contracts. When it comes time to renewing them, we need to study them and say, is this really what we want to do? Can we sit with our staff and ask them to help us?
Okay.
Well, and I would just add to that, I mean, if it was that simple, Vijit couldn't get it done either. I mean, you're still saying, because when you look at every other organization, and, you know, and I feel badly for our staff, I mean, we have like the CEO, assistants to the CEO, and we have the city clerk office, assistants to the city clerks, and, and everyone has three, four people under them, and it seems like we're the only organization that has, we're it, you know, whoever the director of that organization is, is it. And so we have to be mindful of that for, for a long time. I mean, we've been cutting down and cutting down on staff, at some point, something's going to get, and unfortunately, some of these things did, fall through the cracks. I mean, look at the Red Flex, I mean, we've had it for so long, what was it, two thousand and seven, I believe the contract? Two thousand and seven. I mean, like, again, I'm going to say what she said, I'm not on anybody's side, but two thousand and seven, till now. Why in seven years, no one bothered to look at it? That's why we have to bring some things outside people, because clearly, we're spread thin as an organization, and we need to figure out who's going to take care of that, you know, that's, you know, unfortunately, it's, there are eight contracts that are on the table, and it takes time to go back and look at all this paperwork and, and the language and the details, and, and we don't have a team, I mean, that's the reality. And so I would just say, to me, when I look at twenty-five hundred dollars worth of travel expenses versus a million dollars to our organization, it's really pennies that we're talking about, you know, in the big picture. I just don't see twenty-five hundred dollars travel expense, and again, it was fifty percent of twenty-five hundred, and he said that he would cap the travel, so we never, we're never going to get a five thousand dollar bill, for a million dollars that we wouldn't have otherwise to need, just, it makes sense. It makes sense. I mean, I mean, at this point, would we want to get a million dollar back? I mean, there's no way. We would probably say absolutely not, right? I just think it's something that it's not going to cost us if we choose not to go that route, in terms of like, we don't like his idea, we're not going to implement it. If we don't like the idea, we don't move forward, and we don't, and he doesn't look at it. That's just to me. It makes sense.
All right.
I have another question. About Red Flex cameras, what was the, what was the report about from that, about two thousand and seven?
It was, it was just stating a, a point about the Red Flex cameras, that they never gave us statements, uh, justifying whether they were paying us or whether we were paying them more than they were collecting, it was never justified, the court, either Real Money or Super Sub, whatever it was, never came up with, with some numbers for us, because they, they thought that it was, that it was something that they couldn't do, because all the citations were pulled together. The contracts clearly states that if we collect, if they collected under thirty thousand, we didn't have to pay them, but yet, they never brought it up to us, they never gave us accounting, and in three years, we gave them about a million dollars.
Which has been a big loss.
I do know that.
Right? It's been a big loss for us.
I do know that we did, we did see that, I, 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 I mean, the last four years, we had, uh, so that's why I'm going to want to be held occasion higher. But, but we did see that the I M and we had, our chief of police consulting courts to, to find, like, those tickets, you know, to buy, to see how, how we could separate the transactions. And we did renew a contract, knowing that the city was not, it wasn't a cost to the city, so.
Well, we don't know, well, that's one, it's two points, we don't know. If you ask me, you know, Robert, you know, you've paid them a million dollars since renewing three years ago, has the city, you know, gotten a million and one dollars or five hundred thousand dollars as you sold the fines generated from the, the red flags? I, I could, I could say to you, I have known. Your, your own staff, you know, smart guys, you know, Captain Reynoso and the chief, you know, together we looked at that, we contacted, they contacted people in L A court system, and they said, we cannot tell you. But the real important issue here, it shouldn't be for your police department, for your city manager, or for you, the council, to be on a monthly basis trying to figure out, did we get more than the thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars a month? It's thirty-seven thousand, they, they give you a, 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 a credit for causing damage to a police officer who spends time, so it's like thirty-one thousand dollars, I mean, I don't know, a couple hundred, a year there. So, their contract specifically said, and Bob knows this real well, we will not charge you more than we receive. Every month that they bill you, or let's say, you know, in arrears, whatever, there should, let's say, on a quarterly basis, we bill you ninety-two thousand dollars. Here is a certification that you've collected a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Or if you collected eighty thousand, you now have a twelve thousand dollar credit going forward. Owns shouldn't have been on this city, a contract that they signed. The onus is on them to show you that their system and the payments generated, you know, your payments to them would never exceed what the, the fines generate to the city.
So, so do that with that one?
No. We don't know. But, contract's terminated, but the, the issue still exists, whether or not the, the money you paid to them exceeded or didn't exceed, you know, you know, what, what, how much was collected, they, we know you paid them a million bucks, you know, within a couple grand either way. We do not know with any degree of certainty, because they did not thought about it in terms of their contract in detailing to you how much money was coming in a monthly quarter for your taxes.
So, if you had to just that in spite of the fact that you're urging?
Right, but that doesn't, I mean, Bob can tell, I mean, that doesn't, the fact that they haven't been renewed doesn't absolve them of an obligation under the contract, you know, to, pardon my language, but, still, whether or not you have a claim still exists, I mean, the, correct, Bob, answer is correct. Yeah.
Well, we have to give direction from the city council to contact them and say, here's what the contract says, you're supposed to give us reports. You breached your contract, we paid you a million dollars, we want to know what you paid us in that security contract.
And you say, you think that you did that to, and if it's your staff or city?
The city, that they paid to the city.
Right, and you say, we, running, if you had, would the staff, that would be that, or would it be the company?
Well. If you wanted to pursue legal action against Red flags to figure out whether or not they owe you money, then that would be a lawyer. If you wanted to figure out how much we got paid and what the tickets were and all that, then staff would do that, but apparently, that, you know, attempted over several years, and nobody's going to do that.
Well, maybe probably.
And he's been a threat to them.
One thing that I, that I would say, and I'm not speaking as a lawyer, I'm just speaking as a, you know, a, a person working in the city that is scheming for the years about this. I just say, Shannon, I don't know, you know, whether or not the city owes any more money, you know, I, I don't know. It's thirty-two thousand a month or whatever it is, whether, you know, the, the last payment due was May or April, and I would certainly suggest to take a look, if those checks haven't been paid, I wouldn't be so quick to pay. How would we want?
Why, why haven't you done that? Why haven't you cleared, cleared this type of thing?
To determine or how much we've been paying?
Yeah, to get down to the concrete, that we're trying to.
Well, that, that hasn't been, I mean, I, I, you know, that, that's part of the discussion tonight. That wasn't my, I, I wasn't authorized or requested to look at this. It certainly, I would say, almost a year ago, it was brought to the attention, you know, the document that I, you know, submitted to, 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 to staff.
Weren't you saying that, that the courts?
Well, and that, that's my point, I know that that happened to you directly, but it hasn't really happened. So we question this, we, why do you mention that? Says if we can tackle it now, over a year later.
Monica, what, well, let me just, I think what he's saying is that exactly, if you haven't been successful, here's someone that's saying, he may be successful, he may be able to recover some money. If he doesn't, we don't pay him, but if he does, that's the value that we already have exerted, or, you know, staff time, and if he can do it, why not allow it to?
Well, and also, you know, you just said, I, 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 you get eighty-five cents, I get fifteen cents. And I, I think there's another issue here, and I, I don't want to take a whole time, just, there's another issue here. This is a company that I believe at least twenty other municipalities is providing this service. If I were this company, and listen, maybe in, in two weeks, they'd say, here it is. We've collected, you know, we, you know, you've collected one point three million. It's a possibility, I could, you know, swear it would be the way. But the, the point is, I'm a company that derives my income from selling the products to municipalities in California. Would I be thrilled to know that a municipality is about to file lawsuit against me for, you know, deflating me in a contract and not paying me, and, and I'm paying them more than what they're supposed to be paying me? It's not exactly a good business decision.
But, but what I'm, what I'm thinking of that is, when we mentioned this, Red flags is the, you know, point that we can tackle, the staff side, and I'm wondering how you tackled it, and you've been like this for now, over a year, I believe. And so why hasn't that, or if, if the red flags have happened in the discussion, it's not.
But it's brand new, bro, this is just, not re-discussion. It was not part of, I believe it was not a part of the previous, that's correct. Now, I would say this, in terms of approach, the way I would approach this, if thirty-six months or something, I, I would endeavor to randomly, I, I, despite with the guy from L A County said, there's got to be a way to determine fines paid for going through, you know, a red light as compared to jaywalking or, you know, you know, getting some speeding ticket, you know, if they're identified differently, right? I believe the red flags, you know, is different than the other, there, there's a way. To me, my approach would be to randomly test a few months. You know, I, I, I would, at this point, say, I'm going to look through five thousand boxes of thirty-six months. I would approach, you know, looking at a few months. You know, we, we do know, by the way, how many tickets are issued every month. And the, the way it works with these guys is that, if you're six cameras, or if you have six or eight locations, chief, or something like that, people go through the cameras. So at the end of the month, red flags knows there's theoretically eight hundred potential items issued. Then the way the law works, they then go through and see, can we identify the person in the car? And they, they vet and say, okay, you're down four hundred. They cut it down, and then you, you send out summonses, right, to the four hundred. And they get notified, they go to court. Some maybe immediately pay, some say, judge, I can't pay five hundred bucks, I need to be paid, you know, or contested, or I have to be paid, you know, I need five months to pay it out. We don't know, you know, if and when those are paid, if they come back to us.
Okay, let me just go, we, we got a full town.
Sorry, okay, I'm going to go ahead and move to approval.
Well, Mayor, we're, we're, this isn't close.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
But, but I did, I did have a couple of questions just for clarification. Okay, I, I'm not, I just want to have the same issue we had with, on the last contract with, with the payment. So can you explain how you're going to get paid? I know last time.
No, no, I, I understand. There might have been, I, I think.
Can you clarify?
Yes, I will.
And do we have it clear how you're going to?
I, 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 I would, if you don't mind, I, I would, I don't have any answer, but Shannon and I spent a long time going through this. Okay? So, let's say, I save you, I'm trying to do it mathematically easy. It's twenty-four months, I save you twenty-four hundred dollars. Okay? So theoretically, not theoretically, it's twenty-four hundred dollars. So twenty percent of twenty-four hundred dollars, I'm sorry, fifteen percent, I like, is, is a hundred and... Three sixty, okay? Take three sixty, divide that by eight quarters, right? So let's say that's sixty bucks a quarter, something like that. I will bill in arrears, so January, February, March, come April, I bill in arrears for that forty-five dollars. Is that, do I have that right? Yes. The, the only, the only, not a ripple, but let me just say this. Let's say, as well, I go back and get you a refund. We've been talking about a possibility here with the camera operator, okay? So, based on my effort, we get you a hundred dollars back, okay? You get that check, credit, you know, in the mail, a hundred dollars. Within thirty days of you receiving that payment, based on my work, I would get fifteen percent of that. I don't wait two years to get a check, you know, upfront for, for recovery.
Okay, so if this took twenty-four months, do you get paid after the twenty-four months? Or how, or how, what you found the savings? And you say, okay, make the changes with the savings.
On a, on a quarterly basis going forward, if, if the implementation.
I mean, what, when would be the start date you start to?
The, the, well, if, if, let's say, we negotiate a contract, as of January first, the contract, the, the new savings starts. It's been implemented, the savings are going forward. So, January, February, March, April, uh, April, I submit a quarterly payment in arrears for the savings from January, February, March, of that, and if you gave this example, forty-five dollars. So you would have saved eighty-five percent. Okay, my fifteen percent of that number is forty-five dollars for that quarter. After you save it?
So basically, the savings have to already be implemented.
You, you would only pay me in the savings out of the savings that you've made on billing in arrears, not in the future.
Okay, is that clear in the contract?
Yes. The language in the contract says that the savings have to be achieved, and that's what that means. Savings have to come into the city already, not just implement the policy, but the savings had to already come in and in.
Be in our hands.
Right, that are all our services.
Okay. Now, as far as the projects, are you, you going to come back each time to talk to us about what you're going to be mentioning? And how do we? Okay, for example, well, last time you did the honeywell, the landscaping, you mentioned the waste, the waste hall, are we doing that contract? City collections, I guess we're not getting paid.
Well, I, I think the way, yes, Councilman, I, I think the way that we, we work on that, first of all, I don't decide on my own to go really, really work on something. It's in conjunction with, you know, the point of contact for me, on a daily basis, is, you know, Shannon and the staff. They say, that's a big idea, we want, you know, let's do that, we start doing that. And certainly, you know, on a quarterly basis or six months, I'd be, you know, you know, Shannon could give the, an update E to B, I could come to do that, you know, to, and if you have suggestions, I, I think, you know, the ways to whatever, I think the easiest way, I mean, the proper flow, be Shannon and Shannon.
Well, I would just like to see, you know, your assignments, but you become the council, we approve them.
If the council wishes, we can have him come back when there are an idea and he has a proposal, and that's kind of what we did on these last ones, we gave a proposal out there.
I don't think there are any surprises, you know.
That's what I like to suggest, to know what.
And, and the world, world is, since you and I, you know, we're aware, if, I mean, I'm, I'm just sort of a guy that power shoots in. You say, you know, there's something that just, you know, I have a big believer in this. The longer something happens or occurs without some level of scrutiny, then those are opportunities that are very much for analysis.
Okay. Okay, I respect this.
Thanks, Rob.
I think you, all right. We're going to go to the next one, a consider option for economic development. I was going to go to Jim, I'm, I'm more now. I just, I just want to say, I got my head down. Okay, yeah. All right, so, very much.
Actually, this item is also an important session for action if you, if you will. And then the decision of source, we can turn outside of the alternative. In summary, as since the council approved the position of being a person of capitalism, and it's very, very difficult, actually, we have not been successful in finding a good candidate. We want to, we have, I'm sure, extended here, and the people that are concerned, and so on. And we wish out to the, um, the, the, to see if the shares, or if we can, we have, and the fortune, to, to, like, to, 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 to.